We'll call a meeting to order, Ms. Whitby.
Yes, sir.
Call the roll, please.
Yes, sir Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Fouch.
Here.
Height.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
Quorum is present, sir.
Thank you. Our Ward four aldermen are going to lead us in a prayer and pledge. Please stand.
Our father, thank you for this day for giving us these opportunities that you give us. Thank you for allowing us to live in the country that we live in, choices that we have. Thank you for the freedom that we fought for, having a value basis. Thank you for this group of council, as we consider tonight's business. I pray amen.
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 Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Second. On a motion.
On the motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, including a special call, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Let's do the communications. Anybody want to pull on communication?
Number two.
Number two. And I would like to pull number four.
Four.
So how about a motion to accept one and three?
So moved.
Second. On the motion on one and three, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number two, do you want it by title or in its entirety?
Just by title. I'd like for Mrs. Scott to kind of explain this to us.
Okay, this is a communication filed by Karen Scott, Finance Director. It is a letter from EGP P L L C of North, and it's the North Little Rock Electric Department Audit for the year ended December 31st, 2014.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to tell you, we emailed out a PDF of this. I have a hard copy at your desk tonight, and I want to point out to you, the first page of the Independent Auditor's Report, which is directly behind the table of contents, at the very bottom of that is the opinion, and that's the most important part of this document because it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material aspects, the financial position of the department as of December 31st, 2014, and 2013, and the results of its operations and its cash flows for the years then ended, in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." I would certainly entertain any questions. Joe Follen is here. I would like to commend Mr. Follen and his staff at the Electric Department. They are meticulous and very thorough, and they work hard to keep the Electric Department funds in order and properly accounted for.
Questions? Comments? How about a motion to adopt?
To accept and file.
Accept that one. Second. On the motion.
Motion Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chris. Okay, scheduled public hearings. We have a public hearing regarding oh fifteen thirty-eight. So I'm going to call that public hearing to order and see if there are people here to visit about it. Anybody signed up or want to visit about oh fifteen thirty-eight? Mr. Harden.
Well, I represent Mr., or represent Gene Pfeiffer Limited Partnership that owns the property owner in the, in the North Shore Business Park, and this is a petition to form an improvement district to build one of two alternative roads for North Shore Lane, one that are each attached to the petition. We have provided certificates from the assessor's office and from the beach abstract certifying who the property owners are in the district, and certifying that a majority of the assessed value has signed the petition, which would have been the Pfeiffer Family Limited Partnership. And we have, according to the statute, of course, we've sent out the proper notices published for this hearing, and we've notified all the property owners according to the statute, and we have presented an ordinance for consideration tonight whereby this council will have a finding of whether or not we have done just that, which is to have a majority of the property owners to petition for formation of the district. At that juncture, we believe that the city council then is obligated to adopt an ordinance and appoint commissioners for the district. And then I can answer any questions that anybody has about this. I think it's probably a pretty familiar issue.
Thank you very much. Any other persons wanting to comment? Gene?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I represent thirty businesses and institutional citizens of North Little Rock, most of whom came here from elsewhere, lured by your well-earned reputation for being both business-friendly to newcomers and supportive of those already here. You've heard from many of them who are very upset with recent developments. They live with congestion and existing traffic patterns every day, and know more than any of us what needs to be done. Please listen to them. I represent the balance of the available sites in the business park available to add to your city's tax base and employment numbers. Please continue your previous policies of supporting that future growth. And of course, in admission, I also represent my own profit motive, which I don't expect or ask your consideration, but in ignoring that, you should not ignore the business and institutions already in the park and its potential for, 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 its potential for future growth of your city. North Shore Business Park has been characterized as unwilling to build the road, or to build it in time to match the construction of the apartment project. We've been characterized as unwilling to pay an appropriate share of the road cost and trying to unfairly shift those costs to others of what should be our portion to But by signing these formation documents for the Special Improvement District, North Shore Business Park is obligating its land to pay for one or other of the two roads, and giving the control of that to a commission in which the North Shore Business Park would be a minority, one member out of possibly three or five. With North Shore Business Park's cost share, the construction schedule determined by that majority, surely this should end any inaccurate accusations of unwillingness. I hope you will appoint a reasonable third commissioner committed to building the road. I hope it will be built at once, since the publicity surrounding this issue has been damaging to the growth of the park. I hope the commission will hire an assessor who will cause a fair apportionment of the cost among all the property owners, but I can only hope, I cannot make it happen as a minority member. But by signing this petition, I'm providing a mechanism for it to happen, which should end the previous mischaracterizations. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, this is not a hostile act. It is an enabling mechanism that signals to your purchaser, or to any other prospect, that the road can and will be built, that the cost thereof will be fairly apportioned with a proper share to North Shore Business Park. This mechanism can and should be used to build this road at once. So I plead with you, form this district, appoint a commissioner, and let's go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others? Mr. Chamber.
Just very quickly, first, I would just say, I typically dress a little nicer when I'm visiting with you, but when you own a dry cleaners and it's ninety-five degrees outside, you dress for comfort. I would just say that I, just up here to let you know that we do not support the Chandler's, do not support the formation of a Special Improvement District, and the Lindsay Group is not here tonight, but they did give me authorization to state that they are also against forming a Special Improvement District. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing, and we have another public hearing, North Rock Police Department, regarding application of twenty fifteen Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant. So I'm going to call that public hearing to order anyone here to speak on this grant for the police department. Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing, and I think at that point in time, we can go straight into public comment on particular legislation, and, but you're going to hold jurors up, Jimmy Ard, R fifteen ninety-one.
You're the only one here.
There's another guy standing for it.
Yeah, but he's holding his thoughts.
Well, I'll hold mine. I'm not too sure what I'm talking about, to be honest with you. I do understand that you, the city is opposed for them getting into being brought in to their own community. I don't think we should try to stop them for that. If they've got all the credentials, then let's let them in. I know a lot of people in Little Italy, so I'm for it instead of being opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ard. I see no others signed up, so let's go right on into legislation. Ms. Whitby?
Unfinished business, oh fifteen thirty-eight.
Hold it, please.
Okay. Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Anybody want to pull any out of the consent agenda?
Yes, I do, I do, I do.
I don't think so.
Hold up. No, I don't. I got my answers.
Okay, great. How about a motion to accept?
Move for adoption.
Move for, on the consent agenda?
On the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Taylor, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
New business, R fifteen eighty-nine, Mayor Smith.
That would be a, please call it.
Yes, sir. Resolution amending the twenty fifteen budget, resolution number eighty-seven eleven, for the City of North Little Rock to provide funding for certain capital improvements and other services of the city for the North Little Rock Airport facilities.
Move for adoption.
Second. Questions?
On this contract, when will that, will we put out RFPs for that? You know, this, it ends in December. Will we put out RFPs in what, October, November?
Well, we'd have to bid it out.
Okay.
Yeah, so if that's what you want us to do, what we've, what we've done over the years, if they don't change the price, and we're satisfied with their job they've been doing, then we've been asked to roll it over in the anticipation that a bid would make the price go up. Counsel, do you want to say anything on that?
The only thing I was going to pitch in is that, you know, fourteen fifty-eight one oh four allows us to extend the term of a contract. That's where our authority is to do that. So if we find the terms to be advantageous to the city, you can just extend the term, all terms stay the same, you know, except for the length of the contract and time, you know, so you could extend the time. If, is there something in the contract that you want to change, if something needs to be renegotiated, it needs to be rebid. So I think that's the decision.
I take the lead from our engineers on this, and when they tell me that it's a good deal, we need to keep it, then I go with their recommendation. Ms. Ross?
I guess one of the questions, we don't have a sidewalk program, and this is for the sidewalk program, so I guess, are we going to get sidewalk money next?
Well, I mean, we don't this year, unless C D B G's got some sidewalks, are we doing any repair? You know of any sidewalks we're going to be doing? No. No, so probably right now, he won't do any work for us the rest of the year. And, you know, we'll come back to you in latter part of the year and see if you want to rebid it. Okay, where are we, Ms. Whitby?
We have a motion and a second.
About, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher. Yes.
Thank you. Chris, can you explain this to us? Or Robert, one of you? Chris can.
Did you want me to go ahead and do the first reading?
Please.
An ordinance amending chapter six, floods, a flood damage prevention program of the North Little Rock Municipal Code to add section three under article three on compliance, greater restrictions, and liability disclaimer, first reading.
Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, it's just an addition to what the council passed a couple of sections ago. There was a section that was mistakenly left out, and FEMA represented, pointed out to us, and legal.
Okay, so we're just correcting the one we did a couple, three, four meetings ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How about a motion?
I move to waive our readings.
Second.
On the motion, on the motion to waive all readings?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chris. Okay, scheduled public hearings. We have a public hearing regarding oh fifteen thirty-eight. So I'm going to call that public hearing to order and see if there are people here to visit about it. Anybody signed up or want to visit about oh fifteen thirty-eight? Mr. Harden.
Well, I represent Mr., or represent Gene Pfeiffer Limited Partnership that owns the property owner in the, in the North Shore Business Park, and this is a petition to form an improvement district to build one of two alternative roads for North Shore Lane, one that are each attached to the petition. We have provided certificates from the assessor's office and from the beach abstract certifying who the property owners are in the district, and certifying that a majority of the assessed value has signed the petition, which would have been the Pfeiffer Family Limited Partnership. And we have, according to the statute, of course, we've sent out the proper notices published for this hearing, and we've notified all the property owners according to the statute, and we have presented an ordinance for consideration tonight whereby this council will have a finding of whether or not we have done just that, which is to have a majority of the property owners to petition for formation of the district. At that juncture, we believe that the city council then is obligated to adopt an ordinance and appoint commissioners for the district. And then I can answer any questions that anybody has about this. I think it's probably a pretty familiar issue.
Thank you very much. Any other persons wanting to comment? Gene?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I represent thirty businesses and institutional citizens of North Little Rock, most of whom came here from elsewhere, lured by your well-earned reputation for being both business-friendly to newcomers and supportive of those already here. You've heard from many of them who are very upset with recent developments. They live with congestion and existing traffic patterns every day, and know more than any of us what needs to be done. Please listen to them. I represent the balance of the available sites in the business park available to add to your city's tax base and employment numbers. Please continue your previous policies of supporting that future growth. And of course, in admission, I also represent my own profit motive, which I don't expect or ask your consideration, but in ignoring that, you should not ignore the business and institutions already in the park and its potential for, 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 its potential for future growth of your city. North Shore Business Park has been characterized as unwilling to build the road, or to build it in time to match the construction of the apartment project. We've been characterized as unwilling to pay an appropriate share of the road cost and trying to unfairly shift those costs to others of what should be our portion to But by signing these formation documents for the Special Improvement District, North Shore Business Park is obligating its land to pay for one or other of the two roads, and, and giving the control of that to a commission in which the North Shore Business Park would be a minority, one member out of possibly three or five. With North Shore Business Park's cost share, the construction schedule determined by that majority, surely this should end any inaccurate accusations of unwillingness. I hope you will appoint a reasonable third commissioner committed to building the road. I hope it will be built at once, since the publicity surrounding this issue has been damaging to the growth of the park. I hope the commission will hire an assessor who will cause a fair apportionment of the cost among all the property owners, but I can only hope, I cannot make it happen as a minority member. But by signing this petition, I'm providing a mechanism for it to happen, which should end the previous mischaracterizations. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, this is not a hostile act. It is an enabling mechanism that signals to your purchaser, or to any other prospect, that the road can and will be built, that the cost thereof will be fairly apportioned with a proper share to North Shore Business Park. This mechanism can and should be used to build this road at once. So I plead with you, form this district, appoint a commissioner, and let's go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others? Mr. Chamber.
Just very quickly, first, I would just say, I typically dress a little nicer when I'm visiting with you, but when you own a dry cleaners and it's ninety-five degrees outside, you dress for comfort. I would just say that I, just up here to let you know that we do not support the Chandler's, do not support the formation of a Special Improvement District, and the Lindsay Group is not here tonight, but they did give me authorization to state that they are also against forming a Special Improvement District. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing, and we have another public hearing, North Rock Police Department, regarding application of twenty fifteen Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant. So I'm going to call that public hearing to order anyone here to speak on this grant for the police department. Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing, and I think at that point in time, we can go straight into public comment on particular legislation, and, but you're going to hold jurors up, Jimmy Ard, R fifteen ninety-one.
He's first.
You're the only one here?
There's another guy standing for it.
Yeah, but he's holding his thoughts.
Well, I'll hold mine. I'm not too sure what I'm talking about, to be honest with you. I do understand that you, the city is opposed for them getting into being brought in to their own community. I don't think we should try to stop them for that. If they've got all the credentials, then let's let them in. I know a lot of people in Little Italy, so I'm for it instead of being opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ard. I see no others signed up, so let's go right on into legislation. Ms. Whitby?
Unfinished business, oh fifteen thirty-eight.
Hold it, please.
Okay. Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Anybody want to pull any out of the consent agenda?
Yes, I do, I do, I do.
I don't think so.
Hold up. No, I don't. I got my answers.
Okay, great. How about a motion to accept?
Move for adoption.
Move for, on the consent agenda?
On the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Taylor, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. New business, R fifteen eighty-nine, Mayor Smith.
That would be a, please call it.
Yes, sir. A resolution amending the twenty fifteen budget, resolution number eighty-seven eleven, for the City of North Little Rock to provide funding for certain capital improvements and other services of the city for the North Little Rock Airport facilities.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Questions, comments, on the motion?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R fifteen ninety, Mayor Smith.
Let me say, our chairman of the Airport Commission and our director, Clay's here, Mark Halter, great job, Clay, putting this grant together and getting us that half a million dollars. So thank you for what you're doing, Mark. Thank you for your service, too.
Thank you, Al, very much, for your help.
You bet.
We appreciate it a lot.
You bet.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
While he's here, could he tell us about an event coming up?
Yeah, Clay, come up and tell us about your weekend festivities.
We'd be happy to.
Thank you for giving me the time. I'm Clay Rogers, the airport director, and I thank Mark Halter for coming out, too.
Ross, a yes. White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
I know.
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
About a motion to adopt, as amended?
So move.
Second.
Questions? Ms. Ross?
Well, I just wanna say one thing. I was gonna vote against this because I, you know, like you said, Little Italy is a great area. I was all for them, I've been excited for them, but also to protect the watershed. So with this amendment, and we are part of Central Arkansas Water, so and we do have to protect our watershed, so as long as they can work that out, then...
Our longtime friend Butch Penny's here, representing some of his family members from Little Italy, and he is fine with this amendment. And I'm sure he speaks for all of them, too, so.
Good.
All right, on the motion?
On the motion to adopt, as amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much, John. Thank you for being here tonight.
R-1592, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the City of North Little Rock as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Have a motion?
Move for adoption.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on tax collections being filed and liens against certain real properties? Counsel?
Mayor, one thing I wanted to add is that this is following our new form, that we're, form of resolution that we've put together. There are some entities on here, people on here, who have paid these liens already, and Tom's handling that administratively instead of trying to come up here and then get it amended, and then they pay tomorrow morning. Just wanted to make you understand that you have a list that's representative as true as when we filed it. If someone pays between now and the time that we go to the county, we're gonna strike them off administratively to make sure that they don't get some kind of mark against their property records.
Okay. On the motion? Did we vote on it?
Did you do a public hearing?
Yes.
I...
And I closed it. I opened it and I closed it.
All right, well, you're fast. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1593, Mayor Smith.
Please, yes.
Before we move forward, I've had, and I've had several conversations with Mr. Wadley, and I know in the years past, I've talked to Mr. Carter about this and maybe you. And I've recently received a number of phone calls, one from a former alderman that you're familiar with, about houses that are in foreclosure in our neighborhoods that just sit there and literally deteriorate, and there's nothing that we can do. Is there anything we can do, or start lobbying toward?
Until they get to the point that they're in violation of our nuisance abatement ordinance, then it's difficult to do anything. Sometimes they're tied up in bankruptcy, there's an automatic stay that kicks in by the federal court, you know, that stops the city from assigning liens and perfecting liens. So it's almost like any money that we spend in trying to abate those nuisances, we're not gonna recover. You know, so that needs to be part of the thought process all the times when we're managing limited resources to, you know, to try to solve the problems of the city. That, you know, I'm not gonna say that we're powerless to do something about it, I'm gonna say that that's a much steeper hill to climb.
I know, yeah. You know, and it's starting to infect my neighborhood that I live in and the neighborhoods around me, and it's just seemed like it's a growing problem, you know, monthly if not weekly and so.
That's right. All right. Next legislation, please.
R-1593, a resolution declaring certain buildings, houses and other structures located at 300 Phillips Road in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owners to abate said nuisance.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing on 300 Phillips Road, 300 Phillips Road. Anyone here seeing none? Close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1594, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses and other structures located at 601 Protho Street in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owners to abate said nuisance.
Move.
Second.
Call a public hearing, 601 Protho, 601 Protho. Anyone here to speak on that? Close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1595, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses and other structures located at 1012 East Second Street in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owners to abate said nuisance.
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing on 1012 East Second, 1012 East Second. Anyone here to speak on that? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1596, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses and other structures located at 105 Davis Street in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owners to abate said nuisance.
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing, 105 Davis Street, 105 Davis Street. Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1597, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses and other structures located at 2222 East Second Street in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owners to abate said nuisance.
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing on 2222 East Second, 2222 East Second. Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance is O-1552, Alderman White.
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying property located at 4604 JFK Boulevard in the City of North Little Rock from C-2 to C-3, classification by amending ordinance number 7697 of the City of North Little Rock, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, first reading.
Move to the spin.
All readings.
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
May I ask a question? What's, what do they wanna put in there that is not covered under a C-2?
Actually, John Pownell's here. If we had some more questions, it's just kind of a cleanup housekeeping.
Actually, have the building is single family.
Help me, John, just a little bit.
It's residential.
The present zoning is C-2, and that's for a small type, single structure lot. And this C-3 zoning is for a larger strip center, and that's what's presently there. So it's really the house cleaning ordinance that kinda cleans it up and makes it fit what's supposed to be there.
Okay. You, Robert, do you agree with that? Thank you. Okay, on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Conclusion of business?
Thank you. We're in public comments section, and first on my list here is Mr. Jeffrey Lee.
Mr. Mayor, Aldermans, I'm Lee Jeffrey, President of the Dixie CDC Program, and we are here tonight to try and get a solution to our walking trail. That walking trail has been on the agenda for over three years, and the money's allotted for it. What is the problem?
If that's a question, I think we can get somebody to answer it. Is that, you wanna make a comment?
I wanna make a comment. I wanna ask that you all get on that walking trail and have a completed, we can dedicate it during Dixie Day, August the 8th.
Yeah. When we get through, we'll talk with our city engineer, and he can tell us where we are on that. I know we had some problems with wetness and other issues, and we had to rebuild part of the wall of redwood ditch, but let's, let's hold it until after the meeting, and then me and you and Chris can talk about it. Okay? James, Ard.
I have complaints, and I'm sorry, but I don't think it's right that I've turned in nine people that does not have a privileged license. Nobody seems to wanna do anything about them, but yet I'm expected to come up with a privileged license to do what little work I'm able to do. The city loses money when they don't follow up on this stuff. They've got banners out there left and right. They don't wanna enforce that rule. Then they got these new banners that's going up where it's just a straight pole. Some cities are charging for those banners. If you expect me to have a privileged license, I think you oughta go check these people out that don't have a privileged license that I turned in or have turned in. And Ms. Whitby assures me, if I bring it to her office, she will check it out. And we'll find out because I would like to, it isn't right for some people to be able to do this and some not. You got people going around cutting grass all the time, no privileged license. I've given license numbers of the vehicles, 'cause they can look them up that way. It makes it hard for me to look up the license numbers, but it can be managed. So like I said, if you want me to have a privileged license to do what little work I'm able to do now, then you need to tighten up on some of your ordinances or do away with them. I remember one ordinance that Alderman Witcher got done away with, it was pertaining to horses being tied out front. I don't remember how it went down. Mary remembers it, too. He's over there grinning. But if you're not gonna enforce them, do away with them. It's like the gutters, roll-up gutters. People are putting black top over them and concrete. It makes the water back up. City engineer, my understanding says, well, it's all over town. That's true, but when someone complains about water backing up in front of their house, then you should make the people that's put the concrete or black top there, get it out of the way. That's my big gripes. Sorry, Mayor, I had to do that.
You feel better?
No, my chest is hurting pretty bad, and I may have to take a nitro.
I'll get you one.
Which is right here in my pocket.
Mr. Robinson?
Some of my constituents are complaining about the clothing drop-off boxes at the Rose City Shopping Center. I think the name of the group is AM Vet, and there are just clothes all around it, and some people have ravished through the clothes, and sometime they're out there in the rain. I mean, the clothes be out there a couple of days or so, even, you know, through the rain and all. And what they're asking is, what can we do about this? And it does look very, very tacky. So it's a problem in Ward 2.
We, we visited about that today. I don't know if we came up with a, an answer on what our direction's gonna be, but Robert and Chief Bradley and I are working on that. So I would think before the next council meeting, we'll have you an answer. I don't like it either. So if we can do away with it, we're going to try to. Any other council members? Mr. Vouch?
Friday night I was, excuse me, out to dinner in a North Little Rock restaurant, ran into a couple of chaperones and about eight teenage boys who were participating in the soccer tournament this weekend. Introduced myself, asked them how they liked it. The soccer players said the fields were great. They were really scared to death watching the news before they came here. They were impressed with what's going on. The folks were spending money in a North Little Rock restaurant, staying in a North Little Rock hotel. So my best to Mr. Rhodes, the Park Department, and whatever other city folks that y'all got out there and got this thing cleaned up because it definitely put a great impression of, of what this city can do for, for people coming in, so.
Thank you for saying that. As a matter of fact, we are planning a big launch for all those crews. After the tournament's over, probably in a couple of weeks, we'll make sure y'all are invited and you come out there and thank them yourself because Bob, Bob's leadership and, you know, all the other departments that came in to help, and then Jason Rhodes, the Park Superintendent, worked from can to cane, so.
He worked 24/7.
And we're still, we got one more day, Bob? We got four more days. Come up, Bob.
Yeah, I want to ask him a question.
You know, the, the experts, whoever they are, said that this group coming in is going to spend 5.7 million. And in my 25 years, we've always used a multiplier of seven. That that dollar will turn over seven times. So seven times six, you know, that's a $40 million economic impact for, for Central Arkansas. So that's a great shot in the arm, Bob. Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, we actually have three more days. The teams were cut to about half for today's play, which was the quarterfinals. There'll be some more quarterfinals tomorrow, and semifinals, and finals Thursday and Friday. So if anybody, I left some car passes if anybody wants to go out. Most of the games that are left are, start at 8:15, and the last game starts at 1:30. There's about eight games going at one time.
Okay. Mr. Hyde?
What's this? I've had some several communication with you and Jason in the last week or two. What's the status of our trail out west of Burns Park?
There's still, there's parts still underwater. It went back underwater with it, the river crested again at 14 feet yesterday. It's going back down. Will have to be cleaned again. There is some damage at Cook's Landing, which is not our responsibility, but they have actually, unless they've opened it up in the last day or two, they've had Cook's Landing totally closed off, which thus also the, the bridge has been, the Big Dam Bridge has been closed.
Okay, yeah. Ms. Ross?
Well, I got to go out Friday night to watch some of the soccer. And I just want to say, you wouldn't, I mean, you could even tell that it was even a flood out there. It was amazing. And also, I was out Friday night to eat, and there was a large group, well, there were several large groups on Mammel Boulevard in North Little Rock that, that received the benefits.
You could not find a table
Right.
anywhere in Central Arkansas.
And I've heard that the hotels, I mean, it's not just North Little Rock, for, I mean, larger.
Yeah, Little Rock, Benton Bryant, just the whole area of Central Arkansas.
Forty-eight hotels full, is what we heard. The window's full for a week, so it's been a good shot.
Once again, thank you to everybody. I mean, please, I mean, everybody's out there.
There's one Arkansas team left, U-19 girls, and they play tomorrow at, I believe it's 1:15. Right, anyway.
Any other comments, Mr. Hyde?
Yeah, a couple of three years ago, Alderman Ross and White, and Alderman Witcher and I, we had a kind of a discussion of meetings about the medians on McCain. And we had, we had some great plans and so forth, but something, nothing ever really got done. But it's come to my attention recently that why can't we at least do something to the islands at the intersection of North Hills and McCain if nothing more than just paving over all that?
Last time I asked, y'all said y'all didn't have any money.
Well, how much would it cost, how much would it cost us to pave it? I'm just going to ask maybe our city engineer to come up with...
I'd be all for it because I drive by every morning, ask Patrick, he's not here, but he gets a call from me about once a week. I told him to find the strongest weed killer that he could find and spray those weeds up there. And we do it, and they, they live through it. But I would be more than happy to do something there that looked good, that was maintenance-free. Ms. Ross, Ms. White?
Well, we did have a plan of sorts drawn up. We have some skeleton plans for it.
We're ready. We're just waiting on Ward 4.
Mr. Baxter?
Mayor, I know that the, our Waste Management pickup, not this last cycle of pickups, but the pickup before that. It's my understanding that the mechanical or automated pickup truck was down. So they ended up having to have the drivers get out and empty each bin in front of the house. And as such, you know, they ended up running behind and did not complete our route in, you know, one day. Ended up, you know, calling, making contact with Waste Management, found out that was the issue. Maybe just in the future, if somebody can maybe throw that out on Facebook, it'd probably go a long way.
We have, it was in the paper, I think, today or yesterday. I brought it up at the Recycling Commission meeting the other day. It's, it's on Little Rock's side, it's on our side. My neighborhood has been skipped, I would say, two of the last three times. And we've got a meeting scheduled, I don't have my calendar in front of me, at Little Rock City Hall with Waste Management. You know, I understand that you have mechanical problems. You know, we have the same thing. But we have planned in advance, and we have three trucks that are in reserve. In the event that we have one or two trucks break down, we've got a truck to go to. And they don't have those reserved trucks. And when their trucks break, they throw up their hands, and that's unacceptable, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm going to let them know that whenever that meeting is this week. Ms. Ross?
Could you remind them of the required reporting, that they are supposed to send the monthly reports that they send? Their reports are absolutely not complete. I mean, April, May, and June, I think there was like four reported call, four or five. It was very few, what, six or seven maybe calls? We know from Indian Hills alone, there had to be at least 30 or 40 calls to them.
Yeah.
So they're not documenting.
At least 30 or 40 of them went to Murray's wife.
I got some of Ward 4's too, so, yeah, I know, I could, my log was bigger than their log.
Yeah, we're going to have a face-to-face with them, so hopefully that'll help a little bit. Ms. Whitby?
Not on that, if you're through with that. We have a lot of door-to-door solicitors in the city now. We recently solicited or licensed 23 for armed security. Chief Davis and I were talking about this week before last. 23 were submitted at one time. That puts a burden on them, getting all of those background checks done, getting all the information through our department, getting all the permits issued. Friday evening, at the end of the day, we had another 23 that were submitted. I've been calling around to other cities, getting their ordinances on their door-to-door solicitation. And once I get all of that together, then Chief Bradley and Mr. Wadley and I are going to kind of look at it. And then we want to bring something to you all and Jason, Mr. Carter, to probably revise ours.